Your name, you're the best. Lord, thank you for these men and women who've given themselves to come and serve our community. God, I pray for your special blessings upon them. Thank you, Lord, for the leadership that they provide in our county. And God, I pray that you fill them with wisdom. Lord, help them and bless them in all areas. And God, we thank you for your blessings upon our county. Lord, continue to lead, God, direct us. We give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Good.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated and please silence your cell phones.
Give him just a second or two, guys. We're signing in on the tablet. Do know a lot of people out. Normally, they have more people in here than we want. So a lot of people are sick. Just remember them. And a lot of people are still traveling on vacation. We're going to do a hybrid voting tonight.
I'm trying to figure out this way to do it.
Because it shows our accent without her being connected.
Okay. And just give me the sign and please wait till the meeting starts.
Can I not use somebody else's thing?
No, it's tied to your name.
Oh, it's tied to your name.
You can just vote from my account, huh?
Huh?
You can just vote in my account. Or just like that.
We're pretty much aligned.
David, wash your mouth.
You good?
Oh, I'm good.
Yours is good, Shannon.
Yeah, good.
Commissioner Gann? You good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, I have thirteen present. All right, this time I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the February tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Motion by Wilson, second by Gann. Commissioner Wilson?
Nothing from him.
Commissioner Gann?
Nothing, sir.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk? Attempted to the committee reports and correspondence? Motion by Berry, second by Henderson. Commissioner Berry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to go on the number four on our tourism. We have a tourism committee meeting and our tourism has really, really beat up in the county. We, Ms. Wilson's done a great job for us. I just wanted to share two dates with you. On April the twelfth, at ten a.m., we will have the Super Jack Way Road at the Roan County Park dedicated. And then at twelve o'clock, we'll go down to the Canyon Creek Campground and have an open season little deal there at twelve o'clock. So we'd invite you to spend your Saturday morning with us on April the twelfth. We'll have a little refreshment and stuff at the cottage for Super Jack Way. Number nineteen, Mr. Cresswell, on the Oakway Settlement. Do we know yet? I know there's no way to know how much more we're going to get in the future, but that money's just going to continue to come in and...
Yes, we have projected revenue coming in from settlements already settled and received for the next sixteen years, and there are more settlements coming. The biggest being Purdue, which was settled in the last couple of months for like seven point four billion dollars. So we know, just if you just do the math, that will be our largest settlement we'll receive out of it. So we still have quite a bit coming. That committee has structured itself in such a way, it is the most structured and organized committee that we have. And so the recommendations that'll be coming out of there will be ongoing.
We're blessed to have that committee, though, especially with that kind of money.
You're not kidding. And Commissioner Lehman and Commissioner Cunningham do a great job of representing you all in that.
So we're covering a lot of nonprofits with that, with that.
Yes. And they have developed their own very stringent process to receive requests, review requests, and then make recommendations back to the commission.
Thanks for those two commissioners and their work. Number twenty-three, on the summary report, I guess, Madam Budget Director, any signs of trouble? We're heading down the back stretch now.
I am. I'm keeping a very close eye on the ambulance department. And right now, we're okay. So, um, once we get into, we're getting the budgets next month, and you guys can see where we're at with the ambulance department. But right now, I think we're okay.
Okay, so by the time, by the time the budget committee gets around to the ambulance, to the ambulance budget, we will know what we need to do then?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Henderson, you had a second?
Not further, sir.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk? All right, motion carries thirteen. All right, this time, notaries, could present the list on the screen? Can you scroll down? Is there any more below that?
That last one is Thomas Winner. That's the last one.
Okay.
The one cut off at the bottom.
All right, I'll entertain. A motion by Brackett, second by Cunningham. Commissioner Brackett?
Nothing.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Nothing, sir.
Any discussion, any debate? By Commissioner Parks?
Uh, my bad.
All right, any other discussion or debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk? All right, at this time, we'll be hearing from the delegates. Do remind you of a three-minute timeline. We do have a lot to cover on the back end of this meeting for the discussion. So at this time, if you want to address the county commission, step forward, state your name and your address, please.
We come up to the podium, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
My name's Rocky Joe Houston. I'm a citizen of Roan County, Tennessee, and I'm a whistleblower, Mayor of Clifton, Houston, and I'm reporting real estate fraud in the state of Tennessee that's been unlawfully committed by Attorney James Del Flogman, Jr., the Sheriff Jack Stockton, Jeff Wicks, and other government officials. This is a deadly conspiracy to commit felony robbery, extortion of multiple tracts of real estate property. I've got a copy. It's a legal notice to Mr. Hester here, Shannon Hester, who has purchased one tract of property, putting him on notice. And I've got a copy for the legislative body of the Roan County Commission right here, commission right here, that they need to address and get some advice off of somebody. But now, the justice department's got to step in here. The evidence proves that. I want you, I want you to, I want you to pay real close attention. There's thirty, thirty-eight pages of this here written, legal notice advised Mr. Hester here and other parties that there's real estate property. There's sixteen exhibits right here that shows ample and evidence that this is factual evidence. I want you to pay close attention to exhibit A-one. On the eighteenth day of February two oh nine, Justice M. Holder alleged, the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of State Tennessee allegedly designated Dave G. Hayes, a retired judge, to preside over homicide trial seventeen oh two and seventeen oh two A, and B, Rocky Joe Houston, Clifton, Houston trial. And I'm looking at the order you look at. The order Leslie signed with the Chief Justice says, per Tennessee Code and Act seventeen two one twenty, special judges are required, are required to subscribe to an oath prior to acting in any matter. A copy of the oath has been forwarded to the clerk's office for signature. The Leslie signed with the Chief Justice of State Supreme Court on the eighteenth day of oh nine. On the twenty, on the twenty-third day of oh nine, six, seven months later, retired Judge Dave G. Hayes comes in here and allows Attorney Randy Rogers out a hundred, a hundred thousand dollar contract. Randy Rogers allows him out of contract. On August the seventh, he sends Rocky Joe Houston back to the Roan County Jail, I mean, back to Scott County Jail. On August the twentieth, and the evidence is right here, on August the twentieth right here, he sends Leon Houston back to the jail in Loudoun County. And on the same day, on August the twentieth, Jeffrey Wicks, the criminal court judge for the criminal court of Roan County and vice judiciary state, he snuck to the back of the courthouse, six months late, and conspired with Davey G. Hayes, Andrew Randolph, the former clerk of Roan County, to falsify the oath in capital homicide trials. And it's six months late. And I'll give you a pretty look at it. Day five, everybody. Now, this is extortion. It's a conspiracy in violation of Title eighteen U.S.C. nineteen fifty-one, deadly serious crimes. Now, I'm giving Mr. Hester here, I'd like to hand you a Hester right here. Can you sway a hand to him? I walk up?
You can walk up.
Thank you, thank you. No harm to nobody. But I'm giving him a legal notice right here that a real estate fraud here committed in Roan County, State, Tennessee, and it's a extremely serious and deadly federal crime. Now, this new sheriff, man, it's Trump, Bondi, and Cash Patel. Now, I know three minutes, I probably, I probably used my time up. But Mr. Cresswell, this attorney right here, has got to address this issue. Cause eighteen four, title, if anybody ever remember, Richard Bunggarter, former judge, they sent straight to prison. He was by, he was found guilty by a federal jury on five counts of misprisoned felony. Now, this is being covered up by high-ranking government officials in the Eastern District State of Tennessee. Now, exhibit fifteen right here is the statute, Title eighteen four, it's a federal crime reporting statute, and it's real simple. It says the federal judge or any other government official is required, as part of judges mandatory misprisoned dues to see any offer of information of a federal crime that judge blocks such report that block is a felony under related obstruction of justice. Okay? And then right here is exhibit A sixteen, where Richard Bunggarter went to federal prison for this. Now, a government official, once you swear under this oath, you're bound by eighteen four. And if you get to reading it, eighteen four, advise all these commissions to read exhibit eighteen, exhibit fifteen of this legal notice. Exhibit fifteen is the federal crime reporting statute, Title eighteen four, and it specifically says, "The federal offense of favor to disclose and felony is coupled with some act of concealing, defiling, such as suppressive evidence, harboring, or protecting, protecting the person performing the felony, intimidating, or harming a witness, or any other act designed to conceal from authorities the fact that a crime has been committed." Says Title eighteen four, misprisoned felony, whoever have a knowledge of the actual commission of a felony commissable by a court of the United States conceals and does not assume as possible, making known to some judge or other person civil or military authority of the United States shall be fined under this title or in prison, not more than three years or both. But I want you to read this. A federal judge or any other government official is required, as part of judges mandatory duties, to receive any offer of a federal crime if that judge blocks such report. That block is a felony under related obstruction of justice. Now, these two men right here, well, everybody's under oath. I'm asking a response from this county commission. Now, that's fine, right? It's gonna all get together for what, collectively, one-on-one? I want a response. I'm a citizen. I'm entitled to a response. Everybody read that, don't you?
So we're not going to respond to none?
Okay, clean your time. You're just a reasonable.
Okay, let me explain something.
Yes, sir.
This is the collective legislative body for the county.
Yes.
This is a civil matter, but you're saying it's a federal matter as well?
Yes, sir.
We have no jurisdiction or authority.
But you've got a duty to report. Don't you get confused on that now. Read eighteen four.
We've got authority here.
You've got, read it over. It says, you pledge to the United States Constitution, the United States Constitution and the Tennessee Constitution. Now, this United States Constitution requires all government officials. Ain't nothing, ain't nothing, uh...
Rocky, you went over your time.
Okay.
We've been leaning.
Now, this is a deadly situation. I'm asking for a response.
We'll take up.
Address these men here. He's the county executive. Right here's your county attorney.
In order, we will take it up with the county attorney.
That's all I can ask. That's all I can ask is everybody is, okay, are we done here? Okay, I need to give a copy. You've got your copy of this, and I need to give a copy to put on the minutes of this here commission for record of the legislative body.
That is, but.
Can we make that happen, ma'am? There's thirty-eight and sixteen forty-eight, fifty-four documents right there. Okay. Ma'am, what's your name? Excuse me? I apologize. I apologize. Okay, all right. You need anything else out, Mr. Houston?
Nothing.
Now, it was all the commissioners here that...
No, we have two that's out.
Who was it?
Commissioner Hooks and Commissioner, Commissioner Dunn.
Right. Okay, I'll shut up. But now, Wicks snuck to the back of the courthouse and measured the oath six months late in capital problems. That's on the record right there. Read it. And I thank you, commissioners. Give me the time. If you need any response, I address on there. But we'll respond, right? Shannon, come together.
We'll see.
Get label, vice, whatever, and respond.
We can't respond on this call, Rocky.
Oh, I understand that. Take your time. Look it over. Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
All right, anyone else wanting to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we'll go to the county attorney's report.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Then the county executive report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Y'all refer to your rundown. I have two on your desk. Typically, I just let y'all read this, but these are three noteworthy things I'd like to point out to you and discuss slightly. Point number one there on my report shows what our response and total number is for hyperreach. That's a significant increase this year as we try to drive awareness to be emergency prepared through up to sixty-seven, sixty across the county who have, who have signed up for hyperreach. If you haven't, I would advise you to check into that and please share this, especially after this week. If y'all have it, you know, you've got, you've got a lot of notices Saturday night. Hopefully, it'll help you be a little bit more aware. The second point, please know that Highway fifty-eight convenience center will be closed between March thirty-first and July thirtieth. It's a safety situation where it's basically fallen off the deal there. We're going to do quite a bit of renovation there and make it safe once again to be able to use. And the last thing, I want to thank Commissioner Berry, who is a member of the leadership of National Association of Counties. He's been working for years to try to bring a delegation of NACO leadership to Roan County. And on April second, he'll have the president, chair, I guess, the current chair or current president in leadership, CEO, and staffers from NACO visiting to learn more about Oak Ridge and the nuclear renaissance. So I thought that was noteworthy, and those are the three things I wanted to point out to you guys. Glad to take any questions.
Any questions for the county attorney? Commissioner Brackett?
Not a question, just a comment. I did receive one notice from the hyperreach, not several, so I don't know if it's something that's...
It's very specific to your address. So that's why it's broken down this way by all these places across the county. So something like, my mom and dad didn't receive any because they were in, on the other side of the river. If you were south of the river, you should have gotten about four. I know in town, well, I got four. And I mean, being out in Oak Ridge area, I got four, so.
Can't live underground, get in.
All right, any other questions from the county attorney?
No, I do have, I do have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Send it.
I really didn't know where to put this, but I'm going to attach it to what you're, what your, your report. I just want to give a quick thing. With us going through tax appraisal, I talked to our trustee. For the elderly, I want them to know that there is two things that they can apply for. I don't know all the specifics. I was talking to Mr. Mason before we came in, but for a tax relief or a tax freeze, but you have to have it done before the end of this. It's either the end of this month or April sixth.
Okay.
But there's one that state backs up, so your property doesn't increase. It's a freeze for you, but you have to meet a criteria of income. They would go to the trustee's office, bring a social security number, the W-two from twenty twenty-three, and there's one of the things. That's it. It's pretty simple, and they'll fill that out for you. But I always want to try to help our elderly out that might be struggling a little bit. So just want to attach that to your report.
Fantastic point. We're trying to work with the assessor's office to continue to do more education on the reappraisal process. A lot of people getting hung up, and rightly so, concerned about people on fixed incomes, particularly elderly and veterans. I believe there's a program for veterans.
I think there is. And I've had a lot of questions. Reason I put that out there so they can...
Well, I've listed them. I want to find out what the specifics are, and we'll push that out, push that information out for the two programs for the elderly and one for veterans for tax assistance.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up. I appreciate it.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Berry?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cresswell, where are we on our investment income now? Are we dropping on interest rate?
Well, the rates come down obviously some, but we still continue to realize fairly significant interest. And we would anticipate doing something pretty similar this coming year with our investment revenue that we did last year, which was parked a lot of it in capital.
Right. Do you have any idea, maybe, how much we receive this year on interest?
I think right now, we're at one point seven million currently.
Now, that's, that's across all funds.
Yes.
So still, still pretty significant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other questions for the county executive? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to the special orders. This is confirmation of reaffirmment of the following members to the industrial development board to serve another six-year term. Jeff Nichols, Whitney Craig, and James Owens. These will expire in twenty thirty minutes. I have a motion. Motion by Henderson, second by Hamilton. Commissioner Henderson?
We've all done excellent jobs, so.
Dr. Hamilton?
Nothing from him.
All right, any discussion, any debate?
Yes, sir.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Berry?
Mr. Cresswell, they had, they had another opening. Do we know who they?
I don't.
So there's another opening, though, right?
There's David Webb's seat. I know they have accepted applications, and I don't know if they're doing what their process is for sleeping.
They're just laying it forward.
But I believe we will, you all will receive another recommendation in next month or two. That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk? Motion carries thirteen. Approval of a security bond for Martin Franklin Miles as a youth service officer in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars. Motion by Brackett, second by Commissioner Berry. Commissioner Kirby?
Not further.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Our motion carries thirteen. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to move facilities discussion to the end of the meeting. So...
Not my motion.
I'll say.
All right, motion by who? Brackett, second by Goss. Amber, we're going to move that first item all the way to the end.
Seventeen.
Let her, let me give her time, though. You good? All right, any discussion, any debate on it? Hearing none, seeing none? You want to do a voice, Amber, or?
I'm yelling, yeah. Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
All right, thirteen.
Thirteen.
So with that, we'll jump right in when you're ready. Have a good sitting. Now, I apologize for, I should have probably called you and told you to do that. All right, Resolution three twenty-five oh one, resolution extending the Tennessee Department of Public Policy addressing educational support for the health department employees. I've got a motion by Brackett and a second by Goss. Commissioner Brackett?
That was on the motion.
I think you've got a motion, yeah.
Before we move the facilities.
Not enough. This is a resolution, they're on one.
Yeah.
Oh, it is? Okay, I'll make my.
I'll leave.
Okay, I mean, it does say that. I did get new glasses, but I sprayed urethane in them the other day. So I do say false. Commissioner Brackett?
No.
Commissioner Goss?
No, sir.
Any discussion?
You're just sitting well enough to read the bottom.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk? Motion carries thirteen. All right, Resolution three twenty-five oh two, a resolution increasing internal controls related to the Roan County purchasing policy and approval of the county funds for expenditure. Motion by, motion by Cunningham, second by Gann. Commissioner Cunningham?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Gann?
Nothing, sir.
Any discussion, any debate? Madam Clerk? Motion carries Resolution three twenty-five oh three, a resolution to amend Resolution number oath two twenty-five oh seven, authorizing submission of a full Appalachian Commission grant program application to fund the Riley Creek Campground Improvement Project. Motion by Kirby, second by Hamilton. Mr. Kirby?
No.
Dr. Hamilton?
No, sir.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Motion carries thirteen. Resolution three twenty-five oh four, resolution authorizing the county executive to apply for a waste reduction grant for the Roan County Solid Waste and Recycling Center. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Goss. Commissioner Henderson?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Goss? Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk? Motion carries thirteen. Three twenty-five oh five, a resolution to amend the revenue and expenditures in the two oh four wastewater treatment fund to reflect the asset management plan granted awarded for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Motion? Did I mess up?
No, it's, it's here.
Our screening changed.
Can we slow down there?
No, you're in it now.
All right, motion by Henderson, second by Gann. Commissioner Henderson?
And nothing further.
Commissioner Gann?
Nothing, sir.
Any discussion, any debate? Our motion carries thirteen. Three twenty-five oh six, a resolution to approve and implement the salary resource guide for Roan County elected officials' use. Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, a second by Commissioner Kirby. Commissioner Kirby? Or Commissioner Cunningham?
This is a wonderful thing. Give them something, some guidance. Go by.
Commissioner Kirby. Chair recognizes Commissioner Goss?
Mr. Chairman, all I got to say, I want to thank Jennifer and everybody that actually worked on this. This was the ones that really haven't seen the whole detail of things. There was a lot of time and a lot of work put into this document. They've done a phenomenal job on getting things taken care of by the commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Commissioner Berry?
Yes, sir. I did all the work that's gone into this. And as you look through it, it appears that, that we're in pretty good, we're in pretty good shape at the low end. And then as you, as you get into the maximum annualized, we start, we start dropping. And I thought it was, it was sort of a unique too that, that one of the places that we're probably in the worst shape on is in deputies. We, I think it was thirty, thirty-three dollars an hour for administrative assistants at max. So I don't know, I don't know how many we have. I don't know how many, don't know how many of the other counties have in those positions. It may just be a, that may just be a number that they've, that they've come up with on the, on the maximum. But it would be helpful if we knew how many, how many they had in those categories to see if really deputies, you know, we're seventy thousand. So we're ahead. We lead the pack in deputies, but we're lagging behind at the other, at the other end in some of the others. Just be interesting to see how many, how many people they had in those categories. But it's a great show. Thank y'all.
All right, any other discussion? All right. Any other discussion or any other debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Our motion carries thirteen. 32507, a resolution to approve a three-year contract between Rome County and the Sheriff's App for the Sheriff's Department. Motion by Brackett, second by Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Brackett.
Nothing.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
All right. Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Our motion carries thirteen. All right. Resolution 032508, a resolution to approve the extension of the contract between the Rome County, between Rome County and the credit bureau system, DVA ambulance and medical billing, and authorize the execution of the necessary agreements. Motion by Henderson, second by Commissioner Parks. Commissioner Henderson?
I'll have nothing.
Commissioner Parks?
No, nothing.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Our motion carries thirteen. 032509, resolution authorizing the county attorney to refile a suit concerning Broken Arrow Point. Motion by Commissioner Berry, a second by Commissioner Parks. Commissioner Berry.
Yeah, this is the one we had before. And we had authorized the county attorney to file a suit. And they had been to the road committee. And I think it went back to the road committee. And the road committee brought it back to us. I, I guess my only, my only concern would be this body has, has filed suit. We drew it. So filing the suit means that we, we obviously knew that there was a, that there was a problem down there. So now I think, and I would ask the county attorney. So, so we are, we are on this as, as, as far as liability is concerned. Now, if something were to happen down there?
Well, under, hold on just a second. Let me get it taped on the floor. Let me go to the second as well before we engage. Commissioner Parks.
Well, I was a no before. I was a no in committee. I was forcing it back. I'm still a no. I think it's a property rights issue. The trees are on the guy's property. And the county, by beginning to sue every time somebody complains about a tree hovering, hanging over the road, we're going to be chasing lawsuits from now to eternity. So I'm a no. I recommend a no. And that's all I got.
All right. Motion's on the floor. So the discussion being.
Under state law, before the county is, can be held liable and can be sued because of a dangerous condition in that road, the county has to be put on the notice of that dangerous condition. So that I think is, is the most answer to the question. Is this having a real notice? You've been advised that there are, there's, there's a concern of the trees. So I think you're well aware of the situation.
And I think you and Mr. Chairman, I think even, even you are on record as saying we didn't need a tree expert. That you'd been down there and the tree needed to be cut. So I think, I think that even adds to, to us probably being.
Well, you don't, you don't need an expert to tell you which one's leaning.
Well, I said you, you mentioned they needed to be cut.
But thank you.
I think, I think that's, that's part of our deal too. As long as we know that, that we're on notice. I, I don't think we've ever had a road superintendent come to us and ask to cut any trees. And I think the reason being this time was, was you got school buses running down through there and, and, and the, and the, I think there's a boat ramp at the end of the road down there. So just however we vote, we're, we're voting to, voting to be on notice. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I see this is going to require a long discussion. So just be patient. Use your question key there. Chair recognizes Commissioner Brackett.
So after the storms yesterday evening, I drove down to Broken Arrow Point. They had severe weather down that way. Not one tree had failed. From Highway 58 down Smalley Lane, I don't know if this puts us on notice or not, but there's 21 trees that's leaning towards the road on a more highly traveled road. So I, my biggest part of this, number one's property rights. Like I've said, I'm, I'm still not for it. Number two, after all the bad weather, nobody can sit here, nobody can get in a court of law and tell you when the trees are going to fall. They can't do it. That I know. It'll fall five minutes, five days, or five months. But just on Smalley Lane, and it's all over the county. I live in a part of the county that I can tell you trees that have been called and asked about and they answered to the citizens were, that's not on county right of way. We can't do nothing with them. And I'm for protecting people the whole nine yards. But I just don't think putting the lawsuit on this guy is the avenue we need to go. So I don't know if I just put us on notice or not. But like I said, there's twenty, twenty, twenty-one trees on Smalley Lane and not anybody to go drive that before you ever get to Broken Arrow. To me, that are dangerous trees.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Commissioner Henderson.
Yes. Mr. Attorney, whether a tree's on somebody's property or not, if it's in the road, on the road, or obstructing the road, when does it become the county's priority to do something about it, whether it's on our right of way or not? I mean, the road is small. You know, there's places out there where I live where the property on their property actually goes to the middle of the road. They can't do nothing with it. But, you know, they're being chosen. And so I just wonder at what point do we need to take necessary action? You know, is it when a school bus can't get through there? Or has trouble getting through there? Or an ambulance? Or just the people live on that road? I mean, I don't care if the road's a quarter mile long, but it's got a dangerous, something in the road, whether it's on their property or not, when does it become our issue?
I don't really know how to give you an answer to that question because every situation's different. And as I said when this came up before, I'm not a tree expert. Generally, what happens in these lawsuits is you have a forester look at the trees and render an opinion as to which tree is most likely to fall and why it's most likely to fall. So that, that would be the burden of proof that we had to put, we would have to put forward if, if you do vote to file a suit. The only thing that, that I can tell you, and I've, honestly, I've not been out to see the, the property because I'm, I'm not a tree expert. I, I rely on experts to tell me what the dangers are and whether they're remote dangers or whether they're imminent dangers. And, you know, I don't have that information to give to you on this particular situation. If you do file a suit, then you will have to hire a forester to testify as an expert witness. All I can tell you is that liability for defective and dangerous conditions regarding streets doesn't exist until the county has put on notice. Now, how the road superintendent found out about this situation and how we got to this situation, I don't know. But I can tell you that if something does happen legally, you are on notice that there's a potential problem with this area of Broken Arrow Point.
So if the trees are close to the road, the root system's starting to bust up the pavement, is that our issue at home owners?
If you, well, if the root system on the person's property is busting up the pavement, then you would need to take some action through the court system against the property owner because he's got something on his piece of property that's damaging your road. The, the predicament that you're in is since these trees are on somebody else's property, you don't have the absolute right to do anything about them. Now, if they fall on the road, then you can go out and cut it up because it's on your road. But you, you would need either the owner's consent or a court order to go out and cut these trees up until it reaches the point where it actually falls on the road. Or it's in the road to the point where a, he had couldn't have.
All right. Chair recognizes Commissioner Dan.
Yeah. Mine is really not a question. It's more of a comment. So I asked this to every one of the commissioners, but thirteen is here. Where does it stop? I mean, we file lawsuit on this for someone who has something on their property. Where does it start? Is this the beginning or is this the end of it? The, the biggest problem that, that I have, I, I live in Dickey Valley. If anybody ever goes across Dickey Dogrees, and Tim does pretty much every day on the Simmons. But we have a greater problem with trees. And that problem is gravel driveways. If you come in any rural areas that's any type of hill, everybody's rocks wash off those hills and into the road. And this is a real hazard. It happens every time it rains. If you come across the valley right now, you're going to slow down. And the problem is, is there's no guardrails on Dickey Valley Road. We can't put guardrails there because we have a gas line and a water line that runs right next to the road. So Dennis can't even put guardrails up. But the rocks are out all the way into one lane. And they're about a foot high. And so when you go through there, you've got to slow down and be very careful or it's going to slam you off the road. And it's not just Dickey Valley. It's every rural area we have that has hills. And those are, I'm telling you, a hazard. So where does it stop? Are we going to start suing property owners here at gravel driveways that washes out in the road? I mean, it's, that's a bigger hazard. I'm telling you, the trees. You can go across Dickey Valley. Tim can contest this. There's trees laying across from the hill over onto the road. You know, they're reaching out into the road. Will they fall? Yeah, eventually they'll fall. The tree in my front yard is eventually going to fall. I just don't know when. But I do know that those gravels from those driveways is going to cause rain. So are we going to do that next? What, what is this body going to choose next to sue the property owner? It's not his fault. He just has a driveway. He doesn't cause the rain. That's an act of God. But are we going to sue him? So that's what you got to kind of, I think what Commissioner Brackett is talking about is, is this the beginning and the end of it tonight? Or is this just the beginning? So you got to leave that in your mind and think. Be very careful. And it, I know it's kind of funny, but drive across Dickey Valley Ridge, you don't have to slow down. You'll end up down to the sportsmanship club. It's about 300 feet down the bottom. Water's up right now. I hope you swim.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Goss.
Greg, I just have one question for you, sir. So out during these weather events, once somebody calls in and notifies 911, and you may have covered, I think you covered some of this last night. Once 911 is even notified, that automatically puts the county on notice of, of the area, on the severe weather being regarded.
I, I don't know because 911 is not Rome County government. The issue is whether Rome County government has been put on notice. If the road superintendent has been put on notice, then Rome County government has been put on notice. If the county executive has been put on notice, then Rome County government has been put on notice. But 911 is not Rome County government. 911 is separate from Rome County government and governed by a board. So I can't say that calling in something to 911 puts Rome County government on notice.
But once they contact the highway department, then that's, that's put us on notice. Correct.
If, if the road superintendent is aware, has been put on notice of a dangerous situation in the road, then I think that would be sufficient, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes, Greg. Are we personally reliable too? Or is it just the county? Can we personally be sued over that?
No, it's county government. It's not you personally.
I have one more thing. Nobody might not remember this. I was on the county commission back in the eighties or early nineties when that show, Denet Rockwood, failed. You remember that? The theater that was there?
When the wall fell?
When the wall fell. I think if I recall, we put on notice at the time and the county probably immediately paid a million dollars.
I don't know. That was in the city limits of Rockwood.
I didn't see it somewhere in the county. I remember it cost, it cost the county a million dollars some way or another. I don't know how that worked out.
I don't remember anything about that.
That's the eighties and the nineties when I was on there. I remember when that happened.
Yeah, I don't, don't have any information.
Right.
All right. Chair recognizes Commissioner Cunningham.
I'll be quick. Two things. I have property in Anderson County as well with a gravel driveway. And let me tell you what, if that gravel gets out in the street, you get a phone call and a notice and you have to have it fixed pretty quick. Just saying. And second of all, how many times has Mr. Ferguson brought something like this to the spot? Is that a regular occurrence?
Not this first time.
First time? So if he thinks it's something wrong and he's never said anything before, then I tend to follow what he thinks. He's the one who has to deal with it if anything goes wrong. That's all.
Anything else, ma'am?
Nope.
All right. Any other discussion, any other debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. So a yet just, so you know, a yes vote is for the resolution and no vote is for not. So.
Yes.
A yes is for.
Yes is to file a lawsuit?
Yes. Motion passed by majority votes.
Hold on. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. You need eight votes to pass.
Well, I'm sorry. I was reading what the electronic said, passed by majority.
Uh, you need the majority.
I understand that. I just thought it would do the spreadsheet count. But apparently it did.
Yeah. No, you have to have majority of commission members, which would be eight, even though there's not a full commission here.
Right. Understood. So motion fails?
It fails because you didn't have eight votes in favor of it.
Correct. All right. Moving on. Let's go to resolution 32510, resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into a, enter local cooperation agreement with the city of Oak Ridge. Motion by Mr. Kirby and Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Kirby?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further, sir.
Any discussion, any debate? Commissioner Brackett.
So if we're adding these calls, right, with ambulances, that is revenue. But are we taking away from anybody? Any of our citizens? Or are we, this was not just revenue driven, I guess. Are we still able to?
So this was, this process started right before we opened up the new ambulance station in Kingston on Delaware. So we've been working on it for a year and a half. And the whole purpose is because now we've got an ambulance station that's two miles from the entrance to the preserve. Whereas the closest from, coming from Anderson County, which covers that now in the city of Oak Ridge, is 13 miles. So Tim's worked really hard, his counterpart, and I've worked with Mayor Frank. We've worked with city officials too to reestablish Rome County's boundary up to Blair Road and all the way south of 95, which nobody lives there. It's reservation anyway. But it's just because we're close. So we're not covering all of Rome County because that Anderson County truck is quicker to get to Oak Ridge Country Club, for example. But it definitely gets our people quicker response times, which is the whole point here. And we will, probably, we will definitely realize a little bit more revenue by reaching, that's the, that's the largest neighborhood in the county. So we're, we're excited that we're finally to the finish line.
Good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Berry.
Commissioner Merrick? I guess in response, Mr. Presswell, our calls right now are down. So this is the way that we can, and if need be, we're probably going to need to go east anyway with something in the future to meet, to meet all of those. This would help us with our call volume, for sure, right now. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion, any other debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries thirteen. All right, at this time, it's probably going to be a difficult session, and I'm in a loss, so we're bringing it to the full body to discuss a capital improvement. This, this may or may not get solved tonight. But for years, we have an aging infrastructure in our schools. With those schools, they're valued at $338 million worth of assets. The school board, Russell couldn't be here tonight, unfortunately, he's sick. So what we want to do is set up or redevelop, retool the school liaison. Say, we're five commissioners and five school boards. We're, we'll never get forward on anything working at five-on-five. So Sullivan County did a plan not too long ago, Dr. Hamilton first gave it to us, let us look at it and review it. And moving forward with a steering committee like, with the school board cooperating with the county commission. But this is not to say that this, this plan's end result is going to build a $200 million school system. Right now, the plan still is, I think Wade, nobody here is in school, but they're, what they told us in last liaison was to combine three schools, is that correct?
Well, if you're asking, based on the la, things change from the last liaison committee meeting to the board quite a bit. In that, I do remember discussion about that in liaison meeting. But what they voted to do at the last board meeting two weeks ago was in response to the request that we've made, that came out of Long Range Planning Committee, to study the issue and seek a request for qualifications from a firm to lead an effort to study and make recommendations on a long-term capital plan. So they voted to direct the director schools to develop an RF, or a scope, and ask for RFQs from companies who could do that type of work. So Mr. Jenkins and I and Lynn have been going back and forth to help develop a scope in response to that request by the school board. And I think we're hoping to have something, all we're doing is really just helping Mr. Jenkins do this, but Mr. Jenkins wants to have something back to the school board by their next meeting, which I think is a week from Thursday. So that's where it sits now. And I don't know that there's a whole lot of direction on school board past that, on what they would do. But three, I just, I don't get a sense that they have any firm grasp on which way to go past this RFQ. So it's just kind of an assessment of where I see things right now.
So, and what really, the main objective today would be to permission, seeking permission from the collective body, to enter into a committee meeting with the school, similar to the school liaison, and the framework of making a steering committee above that. Guys, it's too big a deal for five people to make that decision, it's too big a deal for two or three people to make that decision. It needs to be made with this entire body's consent. So that's why, I don't have the right answers. If you think I've studied this and I have the right answers, I don't. I do know the math pretty well. I know that if you have $330 million worth of asset, it's a routine that you put aside, two to four percent of the building's worth, whatever the value of that building is, you put that aside for maintenance, deferred maintenance, you know, capital maintenance or any type of maintenance for the facility. And that would be $9,900,000 annual, just, just to maintain the $330 million worth of asset, that's at three percent. So currently their maintenance activity is at 1.2 million, which about 750,000 of that is consumed and employees. So you're really only dealing with a defined maintenance cost structure of what's remaining there. So they were fixing repairing everything on capital. So I'm looking for recommendations, to be honest with you. What, what do you recommend that we enter to and agree with a structure? Because the five-on-five, the school liaison, I would love to have a school liaison to talk about academics, to talk about curriculum, to talk about other things than a building project. But every time we've had that, since I've been a commissioner, and I've been on it every time, we talk about a new school project, a new building. But I'm not saying that the path forward, we're going to submit and capitulate and give them $200 million to build a superstructure. No. One, we can't afford it. So, but I'm open to suggestions, guys, so. Mr. Chair? Chair Recognized Commissioner Brack.
I'd like to ask the county attorney, so if we do something like this legally, is there any legalities towards us having a comedian trying to steer the school board? Because really, the school board is, their task to come up with a plan, their task to do the studies that they've done. I know I've been chewed out on the money that they've spent and gotten nowhere in the last 10 years from the taxpayers. How much money are you going to spend? How much are you going to spend? You know, I hear that all the time, I'm sure we all probably have heard that. But I guess my question is, are we even able to come up with something like this to kind of steer or offer them some type of guidance?
Legally, it's, statutorily, it's the duty of the school board to make decisions as to school facilities, where they're located, whether they're prepared. The only authority legally that this body has under the statutes is to make sure that the school budget is balanced and there's enough revenue to cover their expenses. And if any money needs to be borrowed to improve a school or build a school, that's where you come in, you get to make that decision. But as far as telling the school board or giving guidance to the school board on a capital improvement plan, all that is, is guidance, which they're not required by any means to accept. So you as a body could pass a resolution that says, it's our opinion, we need a school here, a school there, but it's a non-binding resolution.
And I guess legally, by approving their budgets, when can we hold them a little more accountable for the maintenance and stuff? The county owns the buildings, correct?
School board owns them.
School board owns, but I mean...
Let's, school board owns the buildings.
Right, the buildings. But I'm saying, at what point, if we're the funding body, can we hold them a little bit more accountable for some of this?
You, you can't. Because of the way the statutes are written and the way the Court of Appeals has interpreted the statute, the main case came out of Morgan County several years ago. You only have the power to make sure that whatever budget they submit, they're spending for. You don't have any power under this Morgan County case that's went to the Court of Appeals. You don't have any power to go through line by line and say, school board, you should be spending this money on this and this money on this. You're limited by statute and the courts to just making sure that their budget is in balance and there's enough revenue to cover expenditures.
Commissioner Henrys?
We don't have to approve what they come to ask us for either, though. Is that correct?
No, if they, if they're wanting to borrow money to build a school, you don't have to approve that.
So as long as they got industrial money, then we can dictate whether we want to fund them or not. You know, we're going to have to do something. I mean, that's, that's without doubt. But I'm going to say this too. You know, in that last meeting, they said, we don't know whether to put a roof on the building or not, that we got going right now, so we don't know if we're getting a new school. You ain't got the money for a new school. So you better put a roof on that building until we get the money. And I know there's been a lot of false hope though out there, that we're going to get a bundle from this project of our DOE. But we had the bicycle champion coming here and promised the world, and we lost money. And it might be 11 years before we get that money, so we can't be betting on that to supply the school until we start getting money from it. You know, all that's wishful thinking. And we're going to have to do something, and until we can afford to build a school, whether it be two schools or three schools or one school. We're going to have to have the money to do it, until then we have to maintain what we got, and they cannot afford to let it continue to tear it. And that's all I have, sir, thank you.
Mr. Chair? Sir, when I, when I heard some scuttlebutt about this, I started doing some homework. So I started looking in. So one thing I do not want on is the school board. That's, that's one thing I've steered myself away from. But like I said, we are the funding body. So let me give you something that's already wrote in law, or is in TCA law. And we have the County Technical Assistance Service that will help us with this. So if you go to your C task website, and if any of you went to the conference out in Nashville, let me read this to you. So we can establish a PBA, which is a public building authority. This might be a solution, I don't know. So if the school presents a plan, all right, to take anybody out of this, to take anybody that's, anybody that thinks anything's going on. What this does, it's an established, I want to read this to you, and I want you all to listen to this. So a county public building authority is formed with three or more people who are qualified voting the county to the county legislative body to incorporate a public building authority, and the county legislative body approves the application. Now listen to this, it goes, a public building authority is a public nonprofit corporation and an instrumentally of the county that may be used in the financing, construction, maintenance, leasing, or disposition of public buildings and infrastructure. The board of directors of the public building authority is appointed by the county mayor, subject to confirmation by the county legislative body and a number not less than seven who serves terms of six years, except for that initial appointment of terms of two to get it staggered, four, six to create staggered terms. A director of the county public building authority can be an officer or employee. The director serve with compensation, without compensation. So they're not getting paid for this. It's, it's directly given their professional professionalism to help out the county, without any reimbursement expenses. Now let me explain how this works. So what you do, our county executive would go out and get the absolute most qualified person that's in, in whatever, it's in contract, and ask them, will you serve on this board? They come in there and said, and they know all the, I don't know the questions to ask when it comes to contract, I don't. They get the people that are absolute professionals in finance, that says, I'm going, we're going to get with your budget director, we're going to work with them, we're going to make sure that you have the money to move forward. And then it gets into other things. They know every question to ask. It's, it's the most professional people in Rome County, and we have them. So why would we want to establish something that's already put into the TCA code 1210-101? So I'm just trying to help us. And we have the ability to take the school board, whatever plan they present, they take it, they go to the public building authority, it'd be the architect. The architect would go before them, whoever it is, whatever plan they come up with and said, hey, we've reviewed this, your county can't afford it, your county can't afford it, they're working with Jennifer, they're working with the county executive, and they're non-bias, they're totally non-bias, is the way that it was explained, if you all went to that. He said, this is the best way, if you want to get some things done, he said, establish a public building authority. The thing about it is, it doesn't stop there. Once you, if you, if we ever hit this situation again, and we get stalemate for 43 years like we've done, and I've been on it for seven, we've never took a step forward, anytime that we have anything like this, we want to build a new courthouse, whatever it is, it goes before the public building authority. They step up, and they, they give their professional opinion, know every question to ask, where we're actually not qualified to ask some of the questions that we ask, we're really not. If I start asking contracting questions, you better look out, because I probably don't know what I'm talking about. She does, she is a contractor. She knows the questions to ask. And we're picking out those, it's just a suggestion, is all this is. But I knew, I was like, there has to be something already established. The thing about it is, any questions that we have, we can go back to C task and say, hey, you that's over this, we got some questions we want to ask, it's already established. We don't have to do anything new, and we can move forward. Just a suggestion, something to look at, instead of trying to redefine the wheel, the wheel's out there rolling. And it has been successful in a lot of counties, very successful. I just want to give you one quick example. He said, you're asking, like, some of the questions they ask, he said, let me just, he said, one of the things we ask, he said, when we're picking the right contractor and architect, he said, so we have them in there, they're in front of the board, they're trying to get that, they're trying to get it. He said, so let me ask you, there's, there's a water line that was left out there, and it goes to the road. He said, this is a standard question. He said, who's responsible for that? He said, if they don't say we are, we cut them. He said, you don't have to ask those questions, we're doing that for you. He said, we want to know that they're responsible for every single solitary thing in there. He said, we're looking to make sure that your county stays afloat. And that's why they're using the professional in finances, the people that can move forward with this, when, like I said, we've been sitting stagnant for 43 years. And I thought, when I got on commission, I thought, oh my God, you know, I want to make a difference, I want to get something done. I've never taken a step forward, not one. I thought the liaison was really going to work together. And it should, this is the sad part. But we all have different opinions, and the only thing that we're responsible for is funding it. That's it. Funding it and make sure we don't drown our county, that's it. So that's all I have, hope it helps, and I hope we can move forward.
And just to say, you've had made a difference.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you, Jen.
And is that the public building authority exercising authority over the school board and the county building?
They are not, the way, everything that I've read about it, they are out of the loop. They're not trying to, they're not trying to push their authority that way. They're making sure that you're making the right decisions. And that's why Mr. Presswell would be out there taking applications and making sure that we have that person that knows every single question to ask. Where we're not qualified to ask some of the questions we're asking, they're asking. They know what to do. When they come before the board, they've got it all covered. And they're standing before them, and they're like, you're proposing a, a $100 million project, okay, well, let's look at this. What are you responsible, what are you doing, where are you putting? And they're taking all that footwork, and they're helping the school board. They're actually helping them, they're helping us, I think. I think it would take some of the pressure off of us. It's something to look at, it would be something new for our county, but you would have to establish a public building authority that would be in place. And just think about taking the politics out of everything, how wonderful that would be. All right, you try, you try. Thank you.
Can I say something?
No, let me, we have more. Guys, do we need Beth and them anymore for none?
Well, are you going to be voting on anything? Because you're going to have to have somebody to determine it.
As long as we don't lose our attorney slash arbiters. Mr. Fox?
So, the thing about a public building authority is, and you said take the politics out of it, well, fortunately, you're not going to take the politics out of it. Because at the end of the day, public building authority, they can advise the school board on the biggest, nicest school, or the individual school, or whatever, but they can't raise tax, and they can't pay the bill. That's what we did. So they, they can come up with the, the best plan... So they, they can come up with the, the best plan that they think and that the school board thinks. But when it gets over here, it's, it can, could be unrealistic. At the end of the day, we still gotta pay, we gotta pay the bills. And in the past, you know, the school board, you know, and I'll probably be frowned upon for saying this, but they've not been willing to work with the people who raised taxes. You know, they've been stuck in the combining the schools for years and years. When I was a kid, they just would close midway and combine with Kingston, and that kinda went away. And then it's, we'll combine Harrington and Rockwood. And it's, it's been this dialogue since the early 90s. And unfortunately, we've not gotten anywhere. Because it's not what the community wants, it's not what the county wants. The county had an opportunity in 2018 to vote a wheel tax on referendum that would've paid for the school. And you know what, it lost 80 to 20. Because people don't, they don't want to raise tax, raise their taxes to fund the school.
I got the exact vote on that, if you want to know. Four was 4,019 against the 14,813.
And so, and so, I'm, I'm just saying that that's, that's not what people want. And, and you can, you can make an argument, "Well, it'll save the county money, if you combine schools." Well, I can make an argument, if you're paying a hundred million dollar note, you're not saving any money. You're technically, you'd be going backwards. And, you know, I, I know the chairman, he, he, he's on the right path, he means well, trying to, to, to put more minds together, and that's all well and good. But at the end of the day, this body's gotta vote, up or down on whatever it is. And so, that's why I've always been against when you get a bunch of people that ain't having to, to pay the bills to make decisions. And that's kinda what the school board has done in the past. And then they just, they send it over here to the commission, and the commission's got a vote on it. And, and, you know, then we get run in the mud because we voted down. But at the same time, they won't put any money in a school. A particular school member said, in this, in this bill, I'm saying in the audience, when the commissioner asked, technically by not putting money into school, you're letting the school run down. And he said, "Yeah, technically by definition, we are." And that's by, in my opinion, that's by design to twist the arm of this commission to give them what they want. What they, they, it's like trying to negotiate with, with that wall right there and expect it to move your way. It ain't gonna move. And that's what the commission has been dealing with with the school board for years. And years, and it's not our fault, it's their fault. It's in their mind, that's what they want, and they're not gonna move until we're agreed to fund it.
You're referencing the Rome County High School not being part of the train contract?
I am, I am.
What'd you say, Mr. Chair?
That's, he's referencing the Rome County High School not being added to the train contract for maintenance.
Mr. Chairman, comment on that.
Uh, when I was at the last school board meeting, it was a bit of a surprise me, uh, agenda addition that night that it got added to consider asking for RFQs for this. And I, I went just to answer questions because it's something that we've, we've asked for, for a while. And I used the word credibility that they wrestle back. And I didn't mean credibility of the people on the board. What I meant when I said that was, I wanted to help be a bridge between the commission and the school board so that when the commission received whatever the school board wanted to send, that it had as much credibility as possible, is what I meant. And if it takes something like a PBA as, as a kind of a third-party assessor or reviewer, somebody to lend professional advice and guidance to, to make sure a plan has credibility in your eyes, then it may very well be worth pursuing. Uh, I would just encourage you all in communication, and right now, we, all you have is liaison committee, so it would be through that, to, to lend guidance to them on what would be a credible program, long-term capital improvement program in your eyes. So that they have some guidance on which way to go with it, and give the, give you all the best chance to absolute, to be able to review whatever they bring forward with, in all honesty. So it's not an immediate rejection before, before it ever reaches here. Does that make sense?
If we don't start maintenance, and I don't care if you build a new building, if we don't do better.
And that's what Mr. Chairman was referring to, with maintenance.
We're lacking in, and I'm not saying they don't work, but I'm not saying that at all. But I'm saying when an official says all but the words of, "By design," something's been let go on the hope and dream, guess what, the dream's gone. So it's, it's time to do something with what we've got.
Go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, I made sure to point out when they asked me the question, that deferred maintenance needed, absolutely needed to be included in whatever study it was supposed to be. Mr. Gregory was there at, at that meeting, maybe the meeting before. It was liaison committee, where he talked about the need for deferred maintenance. So I know that that would be included in any scope for RFQ work would be an analysis of facilities condition assessment and deferred maintenance, so you all have that information. It's, the way I just explained it to them, you, it's very difficult to ask you all to build something new if you don't know how much it's gonna cost to fix what we have. So that's gotta be a part of the equation, I think, for you.
But what's gonna change in the last 10 years that they've done? We've still been left in the dry, I'm, I'm speaking for Kingston, it is what it is. And it's, it's the Baron of Rome, and I've had Mr. Jenkins on the school board.
I'm trying to just keep my eyes down the road.
Well, I'm putting it on the problem in front of us, it's been intentionally let go. Everybody around here knows that. If anybody says they don't, then they're in the dark. It has been to push one agenda. So at what point do we hold somebody accountable, or what point do we start doing? Everybody needs that long-term, I understand that. We can't keep going down the funnel that we're going. We're five years, if we voted today to build a school, probably five years or so, you know what I mean? So you've got to fix problems that you have, you have to manage them.
I think we're talking about just two separate issues on the same trip.
I don't think we are, I think that we've, it's been let go.
All right, thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Berry.
Yes, sir, I had a chance to spend some time with Sullivan County Commissioners at our, at our deal. They've got 155,000 people in, in Sullivan County. They have two city high schools and two county high schools, one of which is brand new, West Bridge High School. And, and, and they started out by, by doing about what we had, and then they started adding people and adding people and adding people. And, and their definition was, it just, it just got confusing. They started out with a school for 2,200 kids. They had, they had a company out of Ohio that, that was doing their, doing their stuff. So this group, this group kept on and on, and, and they decided that 2,200 wasn't needed. So they got 1,800, that wasn't needed, so they got to 1,700, and ended up with a, with a, with a 1,700 building that they only really needed 1,600 kids in. Eighty percent of their kids are CTE students. They get 5,000 bucks for every, every, every person that's going through CTE. And that, that, that doesn't have to be welding or any of these other things, it can be cooking, it can be whatever you want it to be. That, that's something we really need to look into, $5,000 per, per student times, you know, eighty percent of 1,700. And you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned, you mentioned assets, but, we're, our schools have never been in a position to put $9 million back for, for, for maintenance.
Yeah, that's 66 pennies.
So, I guess, you know, when, when I look back, there's something missing in Rome County that's just unique to us. Every county around us have built schools. And you, all you have to do is go to Ray County, and if you remember back when Ray County built it, those, Ray County was, was divided. Spring City and Dayton were lots worse than any, than any situation we have. You didn't even go to Dayton to buy your license plates, mail it to me, I don't even wanna come into Dayton. And yet, their school board and their county commission got together and said, "Hey, we're gonna build, we're gonna build a school." And you can see the results of what's happened in, in Ray County. It's not just, it's not just the schools, this courthouse is another prime example of how we can't do things in Rome County without, without everything being involved. That's why this courthouse is crammed into this little, this little spot that it's on. That's why we bought acre, every piece of property around us that we can, and we're not through yet because this isn't where it should've been. It should've been where, where the committee had planned it to be with a, with a, a justice center. You know, and we said we can't do it because it's too close to Rome State. But yet, if you go to Maribel, Maribel's Justice Center is separated from Maribel College by a fence, next door to it. But, but we can't do that. I think, I think if we look at, if we look at our problem, guys, our problem is simple, it's, it's simple, it's location. It's all about location. We didn't have any trouble building Oliver Springs' school, we didn't have any trouble giving Midway what they want.
A new suit?
I think we've done more than that for money out there, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think so.
It was in that same bag.
But it's location. It's, it, ours is all about location. You know, and, and as long as that's gonna be the main problem, it doesn't matter how many people we have in the committee, it doesn't matter how many meetings we have, it doesn't matter how many dollars. I, I think the school, the schools have finally realized in the last three or four years with the current administration, that they have to put money back. And I, I think they, they've put money back now. I think, I think between the schools and us, we could probably go three years without, without having to borrow any money because of the monies they, they put back. But it just, it just seems like we're in the most technical county in the state of Tennessee, and yet, we're the fathers behind in technical students with where we are with our curriculum in our schools. It depends on where you live. We, we pay the same tax rate, but you don't get the same curriculum for your kids. You don't get the same, you don't get the same bang for the buck for, for your kids. It's, it, we've gotta do something, guys, I don't know what the answer is, but our kids are losing. Our kids are the losers, and it's all about location. I guarantee you, if we came up with a, with a, with a school, if, if Rome State was on this side of the river, guys, we would've had, we would've had a school 10 years ago. Wouldn't have been any question, no question. Location is the key to this whole thing, and until, until that changes, we're still gonna be talking about the same thing. To stop and think that we could've built for $68 million, probably the most, and, and, and Dr. Hamilton can probably, probably help me on this, the most advanced high school in the state of Tennessee on state, on Rome State's campus. Then we didn't, we didn't have TAC then, I mean, TAC, we've got it now, we've got, we've got the vocational school now. So that even, would enhance it even more. But as long as we let location dictate what's gonna happen to us, I think we're probably in for 1988 to build one or two headlines in the Rome County news. So 2028 can say, "Build one, two," but what are we gonna do? Because we're not gonna get past anything if we don't get past location. And I think we gotta really be careful right now, how we, how we operate with our school board. Because if we let them think and think that we're, that we're trying to dictate, then we're gonna, we're gonna push it back. I think right now, we've got a pretty good relationship. I think Mr. Presswell and Mr. Jenkins are, are working behind the scenes to, to, to help bring things together. And, and I'm just fearful that if we're not careful, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna go back to, back to square one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So you did mention saving money. If you remember, three years ago, when we had 13 cents falling off the tax road, we gave seven cents back to the citizens of Rome County.
Right.
The school board kept that six cents. Russell and I have spoken about that, that is going into a defined capital plan. So those six pennies have been gaining for three years in there, and the current evaluation of the pennies.
And we probably should've gave them the whole 13, we probably should've kept that.
No, we probably shouldn't have given, we should've kept seven, the other seven for county, so we wouldn't have.
I'm just saying, we shouldn't give it back, I guess.
No, but, but now, as I, as I aired my philosophy, that, that is not our money, that's not the government's money. It's the citizens of Rome County that paid that debt. Just like the next one falls off, I'll have that same argument. But guys, I see that we're, we're struggling here.
Mr. Hes.
I don't have the right answer either.
We're gonna go to workshop.
And that, and that probably would be the better solution. Let me yield to Mr. Gann.
And again, you mentioned the study that Commissioner Hamilton gave you. Is that something that we could all get a copy of and look at? I mean, was they a success, and they had got it?
I don't, it was a cluster, again, there was 38 people on it. But then Mr. Berry said their population is tripping the size of ours on that.
But, but they, but also, they wished, they wished they hadn't gone to that many people.
Yeah, they were, they were, they were too many people.
Did it give a guide to who they had involved?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Hens.
Uh, yes, we do have a copy of that, but I would say, according to a school board member then, and he's still in the school board, Mr. Randall Jones, he would say that the 38 people did not all meet at the same time. There were clusters of groups that met consecutively, they might've met one or two times, but basically, it was populations and demographics of people who met separately became together. So I would say, according to what Mr. Berry said, I, I think from the school board's perspective, they would say it's been projected because they got a school out of it. It may not have been that way from the county commission's side.
And with all of their people, what do you think? With all of their people, the best they could do was an hour and a half bus ride. So, which is unacceptable.
Well, and, and also, they were committed, this group of people was committed to a meeting for two hours once a month. I mean, no question.
For a year.
For a year. So I do think that there is some validity in consistency. Saying at this time every month, we're going to set aside time to focus on this. I didn't think, I do think it helped them achieve their goal.
Well, I, I will say this, the, the school board has taken a huge step by going after an engineer, or a firm, to, not an architect firm.
Not the same.
Yeah, and not, not the Lewis Group or anything like that, so they've taken a huge step.
Chair recognizes County Executive.
Yeah, you just gave me an idea of, I mean, we're, our, our scope for the RFQ was just, we're bouncing back and forth. And we could build into that, asking for a recommendation from whoever they choose to, to hire. What, what's the best scenario to have a group follow along their work? For accountability, for guidance? What's the best situation that you've been a part of? Whether it be something like our liaison committee, or whether it be something like what Sullivan County did? What's your recommendation to, to have a group follow along all along the way that both the commission and the school board could support? I mean, just, we just asked them what they think, or I asked the school boards to ask them what they think. Just a thought, we could build that into the scope.
Who pays for the RFQ? It's gonna cost money, do it have an ideal?
The schools said, "Well, I don't wanna speak for it." But my understanding is they're gonna pay for it. Then they may come back, so, so, so the process is.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna pay for it, I'm sure.
Yeah, the process is, they put out the scope, receive responses, land, through Land's office, through, uh, through purchasing agent's office. Russell probably would, would go through them and choose top three maybe, and present them to the school board to interview, or some faction of the school board to interview. Choose one, and then the school board has to vote whether to hire or not, by the spending of the money.
Do we have somebody, is, is Mr. Jenkins, I'm not saying he's not, is he qualified to pick who that RFQ? I mean, honestly, if you're getting into that nuts and votes, I mean, we need the best, and we need somebody.
Well, they directed him to do it, I mean, he's the director of school, so they, they have, they have authorized him to go this way, bring them back some candidates, basically. So it's still the school board that has to vote to hire the firm and spend the money to do it.
I think here, if they hire, uh, on this project, determine what we need, they should be allowed in the bidding process to build what we're.
That's, that is, I'm glad you said that.
Okay, wait a minute, what, what did you say, Junior?
I said that the, the firm that they hire to determine what school we need does not need to be allowed to vote or bid on building that school.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Because it's a conflict of interest.
Yeah.
And, and what they was doing before, they was doing exactly that.
Yeah. Mr. Wright pointed out that very same thing in that meeting. He said, "We need to make sure that whoever we hire is, is not an architect firm." that whoever we hire is, is not an architect firm by any stretch of imagination. And there are firms out there that do just this kinda work. They specialize in this, do it all every day. So, um, that will be built in to the expectation that if you were gonna advise on this and create a plan, you don't get to bid on the work right.
All right. Let me ask you this. Is there any advice or any suggestions you have for me moving forward, working with the school?
I saw this gathered in a workshop.
Or do you, do you, what I'm hearing, I've heard workshop mentioned twice. You just wanna have a workshop with the school board?
That would be bad.
I, I just think, Mr. Chairman, if, to be fair to, to be fair to the schools, if we have, if location is, is the key, then let's, let's not go through all of this unless we tell them, you can only build it here. You know, whether it's, whether it's, where it's been looked at, where it's gonna be looked at. But I'm just saying, if it's gonna be, if, if we're gonna already predetermined where that, where that campus needs to be, then we need to share that with them so that, that we're not spending our...
I don't think...
Luckily, we can't do that.
I don't, I don't think we have predetermined. I've not.
I, I disagree. I, I think you have. I think location's built, that, that location has had this whole thing.
Yeah, I, I'm, yeah, I'm not subscribing to that theory, uh, but, yeah, I don't know. Maybe we have more.
Because not only are we looking at schools, we're looking at, at, at that, at a school to bridge the gap between our county. I mean, we're, we're going forth with something that, that, that's gonna, I mean, our county is booming, guys. We're probably gonna be the nuclear capital of, of, of the east, maybe the United States in, in, in a couple of years. And we need to, we need to act accordingly in terms of, of, of all the other things that we have. We have a great opportunity right now to, to turn this thing into, into a, into a wildfire that just continues burning.
So, let me, let me ask the question this way. What I'm hearing, do you wanna have a workshop with the school board to determine a path forward with a steering committee? Or do you, you know, as, some of you, I, and I've said this a hun, hundred times, this ain't my rucksack to carry, uh, you know?
It's none of ours.
I know.
Do we need to wait till they come back with the...
We don't, this is not our problem, guys. And I'm not trying to be mean here, but the county attorney said in his own statement, we fund it. If they want one school, two schools, three schools, they bring a plan to us. We're, we spent forty-five minutes talking about what the school board's gonna do. We don't dictate. We fund it. Let them do their plan. Let them do their study. Let them bring that back to us. And if we can vote on that, if the taxpayers can pay for that, we'll vote on it. If not, we'll have to say, we can't. And then we'll send it back to them. But it's not our problem. I mean, it is our problem, but this is not our decision. We're, we're just talking.
Mr. Gann, uh, yeah, I, I, this is my third term and we've talked about this.
Yeah.
Since day one.
And that's all we're gonna do, do you vote?
You know, the, the school board has brought us, said this is what we're gonna do. And we failed to fund it. And they failed to, they failed to, you know, go back and redo it and bring us something different.
And they failed?
Yes, it, you know, they said it's gonna be this or nothing, you know, and Berry's right, you know? Rockwood didn't wanna cross the bridge. Kingston didn't wanna cross the bridge.
That's up to the school board to decide.
You know, I, I, you know, I'm saying, but, you know, location has been the issue. And then when they did pick land, it's gonna cost them over ten million dollars just to get, to get in that one. You know, we gotta be reasonable in what land we pick, no matter where it's at. But, you know, we've been fighting this horse for, so, I mean, they have to be willing to work with us, even though, you know, they're, they're picking what they want. But, you know, include us, let's come together in a committee and then agree upon it, bring the full, the full school board, the full commission. Just like we did every, every other committee.
I think there's been more progress in this new school liaison committee than there ever was before. Because what is done is we're gonna have another study. We are, we, we actually are having conversations.
Right.
I think it's, it's not working to what we think and it's fast as we want it. But the school board has to make that determination. Wherever they put their school is, that's up to them. It's not up to them. And that's been the problem. We're stepping in saying, we don't want it here and we don't want it there. We want this and we want that. We need to step back and say, we don't need to do that anymore. We need to fund it. If we can fund it, we need to vote to fund it. Let them do their job. Let them send it to us and then we'll do our job. I would personally like to just to step back and stay out of it as a commissioner. Because let them do their job. If, if the taxpayers has a problem with it, they're gonna have to answer to the, the school board's plan to answer then, not us.
You know, they only brought us one plan and it's one giant school, K through twelve, and, you know, nobody wanted that.
We could not fund it, so we did not fund it. You know?
They refused to bring us anything different. And that's why it got stagnated.
But, but I think we're overs, I personally think as commission body right now, we're really overstepping it. The attorneys said it in the very beginning, it's up to them. They are the ones, if they say build it in Rockwood, if we can fund it in Rockwood, I, I agree. If they say, if they say build it in another, I mean, it, it's their decision. It's not ours. And I think that's what slowed this whole process down, is we wanna have to say where it goes.
All right. Let me, let me help wind it up here. Do you wanna have a workshop with the school?
I don't. Not me. I, I think it'd be good to find out what direction maybe we were kinda going.
I don't, you wanna revisit it in, in whatever time frame? Well, we, we can definitely revisit it next meeting, uh, next month. But, uh, all right, well, let me say this. I've gave you a lot of stuff to think about and we've talked about a lot of stuff. There's a lot of different opinions about this. I would ask, this ain't the last time, this is not the last time that we will hear this. It may well be something we'll talk about again at that next commission meeting. Digest what we've talked about and then we'll come back, uh, next commission meeting. So at this time, I'll take a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor say aye.